Good evening. It's Tuesday, August 5th, 2025 at 6:30 PM. This is a City of Franklin Common Council meeting. Madam Clerk, would you please take the role?
Mayor Nelson.
Here.
Alderman Pecorelli.
Here.
Alderwoman Ickman.
Here.
Alderman Hassan.
Here.
Alderwoman Day.
Here.
Alderman Salus.
Here.
Alderman Craig.
Here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So before we go into citizen comment period, I will read the City of Franklin meeting rules of decorum for attendees and participants. For those attending City of Franklin meetings, number one, respectful and orderly conduct is expected at all times. Number two, disruptive or unruly behavior, including but not limited to clapping, verbal disruptions, signs, and outbursts will not be tolerated for those wishing to speak during City of Franklin meetings. Number one, approach the microphone when the chair opens the floor for citizen comments. Number two, state your name and address for the record. Number three, address your comments to the common council, board, commission, or committee only. Limit your comments to three minutes or less. I will be the timekeeper, and we are going to be strictly adhering to this. So final thoughts will be 10 seconds, and we're going to move along. Number five, no endorsements or electioneering are allowed. Number six, speaker shall refrain from presenting unduly repetitious, offensive, threatening, slanderous, defamatory, or obscene remarks. Number seven, persons wishing to speak as a spokesperson on behalf of a neighborhood, subdivision, homeowners, condominium, or business association or similar group with common interest shall demonstrate their qualifications. To do so according to the City of Franklin Resolution Number 2007-6227 before speaking on that body's behalf. Questions may be answered immediately by the chair or refer to city staff for future reply in a timely manner. Those not adhering to these rules of decorum for attendees and participants will be asked to leave or be removed from the meeting if necessary. Let's not do that, please. It's now open. Anybody wishing to speak, come to the podium. I'll get my time clock out. And whoever is going to be first, please tap on the microphone and make sure that it is operational.
Good evening. Vince Trippi, 6910 South Lover's Lane Road. My concern is G1, and at the last meeting, we talked about tabling the decision until we got records on the supposed survey that was given out and any offsetting funding that was available to counteract the cost to the homeowners. And I just wanted to make sure that that was going to get addressed tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Dana Gint, 9011 West Hawthorne Lane. I'm here to inquire about the status of the comprehensive sound study for the Rock Sports Complex. The RFP was very effectively put together by the Director of Administration in February. We are here six months later, and still no sound study mitigation or anything has been implemented. So I'm here to understand what is the process and what is going on. The developer and Mayor Nelson both said at numerous of these meetings, there's been like six of them related to the sound studies since February, that the developer was going to cooperate with the access and the developer stated that, in fact, at several meetings. So why is this still not being implemented? Why has there no evaluation been going on at the Rock Sports Complex and no mitigation steps being taken? And just for reference, there's several older persons here that have not been here through this whole process. In September 20th, 2023, which is now almost two years ago, the mayor indicated that there would be, I'll directly quote this from the TV station, that the owners of the Rock Sports Complex and the City of Franklin are going to come up with concrete plan and timeline to address the noise issues. Here we are, two years later. So I need to understand what is going on because obviously we've been waiting. This has been an issue, longstanding issue, for 13 years with 1,300 noise complaints. It's been on numerous agenda items, and I'm sure you guys are tired of hearing of it, and we're tired of dealing with the problem. And also, the other question I have is that the DJ event that I can hear at my house, three quarters of a mile away, I do not recall there being any common council approval of that. It is an outdoor speaker system. It's an outdoor DJ. It's not a bar. It's not a DJ inside the bar. It's an outdoor DJ that I can hear at my house, three quarters of a mile away. My review of all the common council packets, licensing and everything, there's been no discussion of this outdoor DJ. So I'd like to understand how is this happening and why is it happening? I appreciate your help. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone wishing to speak? Seeing no one, close citizen comment period, and we will respond back as best we can to Ms. Gint. Well, the gentleman first that spoke up here, I believe, we should have some information on that through planning. Perhaps we'll be able to speak on that. And to Ms. Gint's thing, could you please address the special permit or whatever for a DJ?
Almost all the bars and restaurants get something called an entertainment and amusement.
Hold on a second. Can you please turn her microphone on so everybody can hear?
Almost all the bars in the city get something called an entertainment and amusement license, which takes care of, they have any entertainment and amusement, which is in-house.
Everybody can hear.
In-house? I can't get that far.
Well, just move the chair a little bit, so we do.
So the DJ is an in-house DJ that they've had for a number of years. So it's not required to go to council. Entertainment and amusement licenses is something that's filled out by the establishments each year.
Thank you. So that's in response to that. As far as the timeline, Ms. Gint, absolutely, we are working on getting that. And what does that mean? We are working on getting that moved up as aggressively as we can because nobody, well, other than you, I want this done, absolutely. I enjoy seeing you outside of here, not when we talk about noise stuff. Because this is, it's a wonderful, we have to find that middle ground for everything. It's got to be done, and that JPM contract hopefully will be signed and sealed, and they're ready to come here and do their job. What? So we are just, so what, Director of Administration said the JPM contract is signed. So that's a big part of us moving forward and getting resolutions and solutions to the issues. So that's that update. All right. Item C, approval of the minutes. Number one, regular common council meeting of July 15th, 2025. Is there a motion or discussion?
I make the motion to approve.
Second, ma'am.
We have a first and a second. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Motion carries. Number two, minutes. Special common council meeting of July 22nd, 2025.
Make the motion to approve.
Second.
First and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Motion carries. There are no hearings under D. David E. Edward organizational. Mayor Commission Appointments, Elizabeth Fritz, 8477 South 47th Street. Alderman of D. 5, Board of Zoning and Building Appeals, three-year unexpired term expiring April 30th of 2028. So there's a motion to confirm the following, which I just read. So here's, this will be a roll call vote. Is there a motion on this?
I make a motion.
I'll second.
D. 5 made the motion, seconded by D. 2. All those in favor?
Aye.
This will be a roll call.
Alderman Pecorelli.
Aye.
Alderwoman Ickman.
Aye.
Alderman Hassan.
Aye.
Alderwoman Day.
Aye.
Alderman Salus.
Aye.
Alderman Craig.
Aye.
Six ayes on those. Motion carries. Moving forward to G1. G is in George 1, a final resolution directing installation of payment and levy of a special assessment for installation of a water main on the east frontage road of South Lover's Lane from a point of connection at the intersection of West Hurtah Place to a point of connection at the intersection of South Phyllis Lane. Members of engineering are here, and I'm not sure if we need to have Martinez up here as well. If there's anything he's got to contribute to this?
No.
No? Okay. Engineering, you've got the floor.
So as what was mentioned before, this came to council on July 1st, and it was tabled to today's meeting. There were a couple of questions that were asked, so I tried to provide some answers in your council action sheet that was presented to you, as well as some older council action sheets, so I can kind of go through a rough timeframe.
Would that also encompass the gentleman's question about funding?
Yeah, it should. Yep.
Okay, good.
So I can kind of start. So as you can see, conversation started in February of 2022. Talked about a water survey being put out, and it was brought to common council, and it was also noted that these properties would be subject to special assessments. So then on February 2nd, the survey letter did go out to the residents along the stretch of South Lover's Lane from Hurtah Place to Phyllis Lane. I did provide the survey results. I don't know what sheet it's on, but... Sheet 23 of your packet.
Page what?
23.
23, thank you.
So as you can see, there was one yes and two no's. And that was also then presented to council in March of 2022, where there was three surveys that were received, one was in favor and two were not in favor, and that the common council directed staff to return with a professional services contract to assist with this water main project. And again, it was noted that these properties would be subject to a special assessment. And then going into June of 2022, it was brought to council, a professional services agreement with FOTH that was approved. We have that the engineering department informed the council that the water impact fees would not be applicable, and that the entirety of the project will be specially assessed to benefited properties. Then in January of 2024, the engineering department got authorization to bid this project out, again, from common council. And then, again, it was noted that once completed, the staff will prepare a resolution for special assessments. In March of 2024, there was the bid opening for this project. Three bids were received. And then March 19th is when it was brought to council for a resolution to award the project. So that was March of last year. And then, again, it was noted that once completed, staff will prepare the resolution for special assessments. June 1st was when the completion date of the project for this water main project was set for, so that was June of last year. So it is completed. Then June 3rd of this year, we came to council for the preliminary resolution to start the process of the special assessments. That was approved. And then we sent out the public notice on June 4th. We also have the confirmation of the proof of ad in your packet. And then on June 11th, it was published, and also notices were sent out by certified mail to all the benefited properties. You'll also see the five certified mailings that we received back from that. Those should be at the end of your packet. So pages 40 through 43. So five of the seven we received back. And then July 1st, as I mentioned, we came to council for the final resolution, and then there were a couple of questions. Let's see. One of the questions was about keeping the well. The answer is yes. I did look at the city ordinances, and under municipal code 207-17D, a well operation permit must be obtained from the city to the well owner as long as the following conditions are met. So as you can see on page 15 of your packet, there's four conditions that need to be met for you to obtain that permit, so you can have the well operational if you do hook up to the city water. And...
And a pardon, so like, I know one of the questions were, okay, so if the city water comes in, you can still have your outdoor spigots if you follow these four guidelines. So you can operate inside your house as well, where you have the outdoor spigots for lawn, washing cars, whatever. You wouldn't have to abandon that. So I'm just saying it out loud because I know there's people that are listening at home. I want a basic understanding that your spigots are still yours to use as long as you have the permit.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, so now we're here again for the final resolution, declaring the intent for special assessment.
So then to circle back, because this is kind of, I mean, first of all, the timeline's excellent, very comprehensive. Appreciate it. But as far as funding goes, this project is not, it's, what, it doesn't qualify for any special funding grants? It's, what, how would you characterize that, one of you?
It's already built.
But I'm saying there's the funding that, it's, I understand that, but if you're one of these residents that are on there looking, the question was last time was posed, was, is there any other money out there? Is there monies out there that can be obtained? Or is that?
No, there isn't.
These projects are not subject to grant funding. They're not applicable to water impact fee usage. The only thing that we can do is, the city has what's called the Utility Development Fund. So as we special assess other water and sewer projects, that funding goes into the Utility Development Fund, and we use those dollars to then support future water and sewer projects that are going to be specially assessed.
And this project does not qualify for that?
It did.
It did?
Yeah. Any water and sewer project that we special assess for, we can use funding in excess of what is specially assessed to the homeowners and use those funding dollars.
Okay, I'll open it up right now.
Wait, can I have one thing, please? That has not been the history of the City of Franklin for decades of sewer and water main improvements. They assess the improvements. They do not draw from that fund, period.
Okay. Alderwoman Day and Alderwoman Ickman?
Thank you. So I've been on record before with similar situations with these. And well, I can empathize with the homeowners and the cost that is associated with this, that they did not ask for to be incurring, especially if they want to stay on their wells. I also do not believe it is fair to the city as a whole to take money from the remainder of the businesses and homes in Franklin to offset this. With that being said, I have two questions about the project itself. Given that the timeline of this and the bids that came in from Oaks, are they still holding that bid price firm? Or is, did it go up because it's been, you know, so long since they submitted the bid?
The water main is built.
It's already built.
It's been completed for quite some time.
Yeah.
It's in the ground.
And then second question is for what we would assess. In here, we talk about how the cost came in was over the 2024 rate, so they would get assessed at that 2024?
Correct. Maximum assessment rate, yeah.
And so that, and so that still holds true even though it's already August of 2025? That we're still going to keep that? Okay, thank you. Those were my questions.
Yes.
Alderwoman Ickman?
For clarification purposes, it's mentioned throughout our packet that there are six homes, but I thought I heard you mention seven. So are there a total of six or seven residences this affects?
There are seven. So the water main fronts eight properties, but one property had a lateral and was already benefited from the water main. I believe it was on South Phyllis Lane. So that person was not included as part of this assessment rule because they're not benefited. So that leaves us with seven. Seven. There are seven.
Okay, thank you. And I also wanted to add, I greatly appreciate the timeline that you've prepared for us. The only person aside of Jesse that was up here when this project first started back in 2022, February, would have been the mayor when he was an alderman. This precedes even my time. So having all of the history of this and where we started to where we are today is incredibly beneficial to council. I highly recommend, whenever possible in the future, whatever department that we're working with, if something like this can be provided, it would definitely move things along quite quicker in the process. So thank you very much for your time put into this.
And one more thing. Typically, in a project, there's not a lag like this between the construction and the assessment. Usually, it's all at the same timeframe, so they don't have this, have to go back in history and time to recreate everything. So it's been not typical.
Right. Understand about that last meeting when we had people off of, we all kind of sat here in space, like we had no idea.
And same with us. We weren't here with the city at the time, so it took us a while to go back in history and figure everything out as well.
Appreciate from the department, because that comes more from you than us alders having to sit there and do the research. So thank you.
No problem.
And I'll yield.
Alderman Salus.
My question, out of the seven homes that's being affected here, I probably missed something. Did we contact them recently, like, out of seven? How many interested in connecting to the city water right now?
I don't know if that was ever asked to these seven, who would actually connect. I know early on, it was who would be interested in water, so that was back in 2022, before this project went. And then, so I had the survey results.
It was not conclusive, because like, like, three people responded two to one, so I'm just like, basically. So we don't have any recent information recently.
I can't, we can't answer with the survey results why the city council went ahead with the project, that I don't know. But regardless, the project's built. You don't go back now and ask if you're interested in hooking the water or not. People may be, once they get assessed, because you're paying the bills, you may also maybe use city water, but we don't pose that question.
So if I understood the information correctly, if I am one of those seven homes living in there and I have well in there and decided to stay on my well, even if the well has a problem, do I have the right to repair it or fix it or redo it if I decided not to connect with the city water?
Well, if this is approved, they're going to be assessed. So you're going to pay for city water whether or not you hook up or not. You could pay the assessment, still keep your well. It's up to you, but that's not...
But the assessment, you insist that the...
Yeah, I mean, you're still going to get the assessment regardless if you stay in your well or not.
So basically, it's not an option for people to stay on their well?
You can.
You can, but basically, if you're paying the assessment, then it's useless argument.
Can I just interject? You're not paying for the water usage, though. So there's, you're not paying for water. You're paying for the water main that goes across your property that is benefiting your property. So if you choose to stay in a well, yes, you could use your well. However, that special assessment still applies. And I guess that's kind of where it would end if you didn't hook up to the water. If you hooked up to the water, then you'd be charged for the water that you use.
What I'm trying to get into, like, you know, because we have to give residents a choice. Like, people like, you know, to be hit with this, like, you know, $20,000 bill in top of the taxes and every, all other expenses. I'm just like wondering if we give the residents a choice. Whenever they want to connect, even if this interest applies, you know, if I want to connect after 20 years, when my, you know, well goes that bad, you know, maybe that will be a good timing for people to evaluate that. Let them pay their current price at that time and avoid all this argument together. I'm just wondering if that's an option.
That would be a deferred assessment, which is not what we're recommending here.
Okay, thank you.
However.
Mr. City Attorney?
Well, as the city engineer said earlier, these public improvements have been specially assessed by the city for decades and decades. And go back three or four decades and living in the farmland area, and now there's houses and homes and everything, roads, sewer, water, everywhere. And that process, either the developer building a new subdivision paid for it, and then the home buyers would ultimately pay for it as part of the purchase price of the home, or it was specially assessed. And so if the decision is not to specially assess, then the city pays for it, which is tax money, and everybody in the whole city who's, many have already paid their special assessment, would be paying for it. That's one point of view.
Because sooner or later, you know, if people given a choice, sooner or later, they will connect. And it's not gonna, you know, it's gonna be at a price. Maybe it's cheaper for them to connect now. 20 years from now might be a double the price. Maybe they sell the property, the new buyer will for sure want to connect. So I'm just trying to, you know, avoid the argument. I've seen other municipalities where they give the choice, and at the end of the day, the city comes ahead. Because, you know, property gets sold, the new buyer say, I have nothing to do with this septic and well, I want to connect, I want to redevelop. And then you get your money back, plus, you know, I'm just, that's the argument I'm making.
Thanks. Mr. Craig?
Mr. Pecorelli? Hi. We've talked about deferment a little bit. In February of 2nd of 2022, it says here, the letter included preliminary estimates of assessments as well as language regarding deferments up to 10 years and financing, 12 years at 6% being available. That's still an option?
Yes, it's by application. There's a deferment process. Yeah, I was just going to mention, in the analysis portion of your council action sheet, there is a part of the municipal code that mentions that you have to apply for it. But deferments for up to 10 years may be granted to property owners, and they have to meet a certain eligibility requirement, because including the presence of a functioning private well and assessable frontage not exceeding 300 feet, and who submit a written application to the city clerk within 30 days of the assessment notice. So again, that's a possibility, but it sounds like they would have to apply for that, for that code.
So just to take this one step further. So, and I'll talk long about this, so you guys can formulate your answer a little more. So if I'm one of the seven, and I'm looking at now, this has been forced upon me, this bestowed upon me, this is an opportunity, however you want to summarize it, you've got 10 years to hook up. If in that 10-year time, then there's an additional, up to 12 years finance at 6%? Or how does that work? Because it sounds like when you hear this, that you could literally kick this down the road for 22 years. Is that accurate? Or could somebody, I know you're shaking your head yes, but could you, Madam Director of Finance, get charged up and come and bring it home?
So if you apply for the deferment, and it's granted, you will be deferred for 10 years. After the 10 years is up, your special assessment becomes active. You can either pay it immediately, or you can go on the payment plan, which will allow for 12 years at 12%, or at 6% interest, and it will get a special assessment on your tax bill at the calculated rate of 6%.
It could be a 22-year by the process.
Correct. By the time the city receives the money. At the current price that you're assessed for.
At the current price today.
Correct. It doesn't increase after the deferment is up.
All right. Mr. Pecorelli, back to the floor.
That was what I wanted to clarify, is that the dollars that they are today is, I'll pick one of them, right? It's roughly 18,000 or something like that, right? That 18,000 isn't accruing interest on day one, or that's 18,000. And if you defer it up to 10 years, 10 years from now, it's 18,000.
It's still 18,000 plus 6% interest if you don't pay it right away.
After 10?
Starting on the 10th, or right after the 10th year, the deferment is up, yep.
Starting the 6%.
Yeah, 10.
Mr. City Engineer?
Just want to add, it's not free money. The project's built. Not the city taxpayers, but the city ratepayers of the utility paid for this project. The further they kick it down the road, you're not being, the ratepayers are not being reimbursed for those costs. So they're essentially acting as a bank, and they're collecting those costs for possibly 22 years.
Correct.
Not the best way to run a utility.
I don't disagree, but at the same time, in '22, that's what we sent out, so.
Correct. Madam Director of Administration?
I just wanted to clarify, that's not just 2022. That's our ordinance. So if you are eligible, then you could do that.
Okay, there is a motion here. Is somebody willing to make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
We have a first and a second. This will be a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Craig?
Aye.
Alderman Salus?
Aye.
Or Woman Day?
Aye.
Alderman Assam?
Aye.
Alderwoman Ickman?
Aye.
Alderman Piccarelli?
Aye. Six ayes, no noes. Motion carries. Thank you for your homework and everything. It looks very well done. G2, a resolution authorizing Franklin Director of Health and Human Services to sign and execute the 2025 Odyssey contract. Is anybody here to talk about that? Yes, you are. Come on up, shine.
Do you want me to talk about it a little or is what you prefer?
I'll tell you what, why don't we, has everybody had a chance to go through their, you put everything in here. You did a great job. Questions from the, from the council? See none, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
First and second, all is in favor?
Aye.
Bye.
Any opposed, eyes have, motion carries, good job.
Thank you.
G3, update report from the Director of IT regarding the cybersecurity incident notification project. Explanation of security breach of August 15th, 2024. Director Matowski, good evening and welcome.
Good evening. Hopefully me and this microphone don't have a problem with each other. It's a little in and out. We're getting close to the one year anniversary of the city's first security incident. And we're looking at, actually going to the point of actually having closure to it. We recently sent out notification letters to all the people that were deemed to be impacted for, just for a brief timeline, for all the people that were actually in companies that were involved in the process. We had the cybersecurity incident happening on August 15th of 2024. It was identified very quickly by Rapid7. And then we invoked our cybersecurity insurance policy, who the underwriter is Tokyo Marine. They engaged with us and they also engaged with, with Rapid7. They brought a, a legal attorney firm, Louis Briswa, in, into the fold, who has a tremendous amount of experience with cybersecurity incidents. They also turned around and brought in Surefire. And they were a data forensics company that evaluated exactly how the cybersecurity incident happened and guaranteed that the perpetrator was no longer on our network and that we didn't have any ongoing security issues to turn around and, and deal with, backdoors and that sort of thing. Once we actually got a full understanding of exactly what happened, how it happened, and even getting the scripts that was actually used by the actual perpetrator. We then brought in a company called Haystack, who's based out of Chicago. And they did a postmortem. So we knew that they, they stole about 52 gigabytes of data, but they had access to over 2 terabytes of data on the file server. We did not know what files were exactly taken. So we have to assume that everything was potentially compromised. So we had to go through each and every single file on the file server, which took almost a full six, six to seven months to do this. Some of the files were digital, some of them were just photocopies that you then had to turn around and make into a PDF, scan it doing OCR to find the text actually on the pictures to determine what was the actual text and data contained in those particular files. Then they had to go through each and every single file and then determine, all right, is there any personal identifiable information or financial information in that file? And then who were the people involved in that particular file that may have actually turned around and been impacted? So that took a good period of time to turn around and, and deal with. Then at the file end of the project, Louis Briswa turned around and brought in, as the council approved it, TransUnion, with their division cyber scout to turn around and send out the notification letters to all the people that were potentially impacted. And then set up a call center to answer any phone calls and then set an opportunity up for people to subscribe to cybersecurity insurance to turn around and protect themselves in case if someone used that PII information for nefarious purposes. So those letters went out. They were mailed out via first class mail. And most of the people started receiving their letters on July, July 12th. We discovered, because this was our first involvement in this, there were a couple boo-boos that we had with the notification process with it. One of the, probably the biggest ones is we did not actually take a, what they would call a proof sheet of the actual mailings before they actually went out. We looked at all the, the forms and the content of what they were actually going to do, but we, unlike tax statements, we didn't actually make a physical paper copy of it. And take a couple examples of some people, take three people, make, make what, a proof sheet of what it would actually look like when they, when they turned around and, and got the documents. We have some very sharp people here in Franklin. Five points to Gryffindor for, for findings of some items and issues on the actual mailing and then questioning it and then calling city hall or calling the vendor and saying, is this real? Is this actually a real letter? Or am I being spoofed by somebody? And this is actually a false document. Great question to ask. I'll never fault anyone for asking, is this real? And am I actually being fished here? Because it goes on all the time nowadays. Probably one of the biggest issues we had is we gave them the color logo. And you can look right at our logo and it's got nice bright greens and blues and, and tan colors to it. And we thought they were going to print it out in black and white. And they wound up actually printing the letter out in grayscale. Don't ask me why, but they decided to print it in grayscale. So when they took the logo, which looks great in color, and you, when you turn around and render it in, in grayscale, it looks like someone took a bad photocopy of our logo and then tried to reproduce it on, on the, on the letter. So it didn't look like professional letterhead because of that rendering of, of the logo. So lesson learned, when you turn around to do professional mailing, giving them, give them the black and white logo. Don't give them the color logo to turn around and actually generate the sheet. Also in the header of the letter, they just indicated CyberScout is the name of the company. Most people aren't familiar with who CyberScout is. It should have said CyberScout, comma, TransUnion, a division of TransUnion in the, in letter header, where most people would know TransUnion is one of the three major credit bureaus in the United States. So this is most likely a legitimate letter coming actually from them. When we turn around and did the signature of the, the document, we said it came from the director or from the Department of Administration. We did not indicate a person's name behind it. So they said, well, this could easily be a fish, that we need to know this came literally from somebody's desk for, that this could be actually be attributed to a person. And probably one of the greatest issues that we had, we didn't think about it because we had scheduling of some vacations at the time and they got the letters out a little bit ahead of when we thought they were actually going to get mailed, is we didn't get the FAC up on our website about the letter and any questions that they had and who to contact. So the phone calls started coming in Monday morning on, on July 14th. And we got a lot of phone calls and people were getting emails. And the FAC wasn't up there on, onto the website, at least until the afternoon. But we did get it up there as quickly as possible. And we did turn around and tell the clerk's office, refer people to the, to the FAC. And if they want to talk to somebody, then we took all the phone calls down within the IT department and answered as many of them as we possibly could. And then they were told to turn around and call TransUnion to turn around and get more details specific to their particular financial and cybersecurity profile for, for their household. Overall statistics, we had 13,666 letters that actually went out. The call center, as of July 31st, when I asked for these statistics, they received only 122 phone calls. 198 people subscribed for the protection service, which is billed out back to the insurance company at $4 per customer. The highest volume call day was on July 14th. They had a, a total of 52 calls on that day and 44 enrollments. For the week of 7/20, they had a total of 109 calls. And then on the week of 7/27, they had 12. So as expected, the number of phone calls are actually decreasing as, as people now have the letter. We're getting about now about five to 10 phone calls per week for anyone calling to address the issues. And the call center is going to remain open, but they're going to turn around and shut things down on October 3rd for it. So we're look, we're looking at closure for the project. The call center will be remained open until October 3rd. But then all the other parties, everywhere from our cybersecurity insurance to the legal council, to the data forensics, we will be closing down the project for it. And we will be looking forward for our new vendor, SCS, to do our intrusion and protection testing. So penetration testing, both internal and external is going to be done. And we're going to be doing a project launch on the penetration testing and discussing when we're actually doing it on September 4th. So they should then turn around and see if we continue to have any more problems as we continue to make changes to the network. I hope for any questions?
That was very inclusive and thank you. So one of the things I know when we talked right away when this happened, that I, I got the letter and then I actually, you know, posted it with all my information for everybody to see. And then I have had, and I verified I've had no troubles, no issues, no compromises of my personal information. I'm kind of boring though, so that's, that's in that part. But I had a number of citizens that came in and I spoke with many of them, walked them through, thanks to your guidance. And this was again, a big crazy number. And you will be coming, which thank you, tomorrow to the Franklin seniors lunch at River at 11 o'clock to kind of go over this as well. And I've told many of the seniors that have gotten this, that, that you will be there as part of the, the normal monthly rotation with department heads. So it's a perfect time that you come. Thank you to, to go over that. Alderwoman Ickman?
Thank you. I was just going to ask, going forward, heaven forbid something like this happens again. Can there be some type of system in place where someone's double checking this and for all those letters to go out with no signature?
Again, it's our first one that we've ever done before and we're trying to get it out around the 4th of July deadline for it. So lesson learned, yes, you do want to have a proof sheet before you turn around and actually launch it. It's what we do with taxes. So we, we should have in hindsight 2020, turned around and launched proof sheet before turning around and saying, yeah, go, go with the, with the actual mailing.
And then was, thank you. And was there a number of former Franklin, City of Franklin employees that were affected by this? I know people that worked for this city in the early 2000s, late 90s, early 2000s that received the letter.
Yes, anything that you would have for your PII. One of the biggest indicators of PII would be your social security number. That's all within the HR files. Sometimes even if you had a City of Franklin credit card, that would have been financial information for it. So because you existed on the file server, it may not have been part of the 52 gigabytes that were exfiltrated. But just because your stuff was on the file server, you had to get the, you had to get the, the letter.
Thank you.
That's federal law requiring it.
Any other questions or comments by members of the council? No? Thank you very much, Director.
Thank you.
Uh, this is information only. Thank you. I'll see you tomorrow. G4, in ordinance to amend Plan Development District number seven as it pertains to the approval of minor site plan amendments by Department of City Development staff. Mr. Martinez, good evening and welcome. You've got the floor.
Good evening, thank you. This amendment is only applicable to the Franklin industrial park. So the purpose of this is to create a category to be called minor site plan amendment because currently all improvement in this industrial park requires the approval of the Economic Development Commission, even a small improvement such like a fence. So this will allow staff to approve these minor applications. These are defined as if the floor is increased less than 5%. And this will streamline the permitting process. This change has been adopted also in the Franklin Business Park and CDY with the new UDO. Plan Commission recommended approval and also the Economic Development Commission recommended approval.
Thank you. Questions, comments? See none, is a motion here?
I'll make the motion.
I second.
First and a second, all is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, eyes have, motion carries. G5, a resolution imposing conditions and restrictions for the approval of a conditional use for a used auto sales and major automotive repair. Use upon property located at zero West Forest Home Avenue, tax key number 748-999-0000. Mr. Martinez, back to you.
Thank you. This conditional use request is for a car get LLC for vehicle sales and auto repair. This is only for the use. The actual the site plan that you have in your packet is conceptual and that will require a separate approval. And if the, the proposed site plan complied with all the requirements, the specific standards for auto sales, auto repair, in a staff opinion, there is no adverse impact to neighboring communities and it complies with the standard for conditional uses. And the Plan Commission recommended approval and the staff is recommending approval as well. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay, I guess I'll start just, because I, I know there was a number of neighbors that came last time. So this is simply for the use because there were concerns about the runoff, the lighting. There's a number of things and concerns. And I know, I believe the gentlemen's here that assured that, you know, we would, we would go forward with things to make sure that, that, that doesn't have any negative impact because we all have wells. I live exactly one mile south of there. And that's, you know, we have got brand new land that's going to be taken. So that's just one thing to look at. Okay, any further questions? Alderwoman Day?
Just one quick question. When we had this before Plan Commission, I believe there were two renderings of the proposed site plan. Is the one that's in the council packet tonight, the updated corrected one? I think that it is, but I just wanted to make sure. It was something, it was something with, I want to say it was something with the, the section on Forest Home. The other one, I think everything was shifted closer to Forest Home, this was shifted back.
Yeah, because, yeah, according to the new UDO, all the auto repair base are not allowed to face the public right of way. So that will need to be revised at the time of the site plan.
Okay. And then I'm correct in my recollection that because of the size of this, it will not come to Plan Commission for site plan, it'll just be.
If it's less than, yeah, 20,000 square feet, it will not go to Plan Commission. But if they are requesting like a deviation, like to have the service bay facing the public right of way, then it will go to.
Okay, so it could come back to us if they're asking for exceptions. Okay, got it. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Craig?
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
First and a second, all is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have, motion carries. G6, January to March 2025 quarterly financial report. Madam Director of Finance?
All right, so before you is the quarter one results. March 2025 financial report is in your packet. I'll briefly go through it for the three Alders that are not on the finance committee. Through March of 2025, the general fund had roughly $58.5 million in it. We settled the January and February tax settlements. We received additional revenue through March exceeding roughly $280,000 over the budget. And then we've spent roughly a million dollars less than the budget so far through March. Through March, we were at a $1.3 million surplus. However, it's common to see that deplete through the end of the year once additional expenditures are made. The debt service payments were made by March 1st. I'm actually going to skip over the TIF districts because we'll go over that on the next item. Page 92, so the library fund and the solid waste fund, those are matching at the budget. Expenditures are coming, or they're going out as the revenue's coming in. The tourism commission didn't have much spending. They were just collecting room tax dollars through the first quarter. Landfill citing revenue, I put the graph in there for you so you can see the monthly rolling average has slightly increased. And then the actual spending, it seems to increase during certain times of the year and decrease during other times of the year. But we're still projected to get roughly $2.5 million in landfill citing revenue in 2025, which is 26% increase just over the last four years. The capital outlay fund, you can see in the packet, all the projects that have started in almost all departments. I don't think there's any project right now that's not started yet. The equipment replacement fund, landfill citing revenues started slower in January and February and in March. So you'll see that the landfill citing revenues that are allocated to the four capital funds are slightly under budget through the first quarter. But the battalion chief vehicle was purchased and DPW purchased most of their equipment. The street improvement fund, those revenues came in, that would be property. The street improvement fund, those revenues came in, that would be property tax funding, and then also other interest income. We didn't have a contract for the 2025 street improvement program, but that contract was signed in May. The capital improvement fund, we did have an encumbrance that was carried over through a budget amendment for the energy efficiency project. And then Public Works also encumbered funding for the building expansion project. And then the other projects were just started in 2025 and/or carried over from previous years. The development fund, which is also our impact fee fund, those are typically very strong in the beginning of the year. We had two large water impact fee permits that were collected, Planet Fitness, and then also Modine. Investment income is coming in higher than the budget because of the amount of permit funding we've been receiving throughout the year. I'll skip over the other two. Sanitary sewer fund, those revenues and expenditures are in line with the budget, so we're only at an operating loss of almost $6,000. The self-insurance fund, revenues are coming in under budget, but also the expenditures are under budget due to less claims. And then the retiree health insurance fund, that fund is typically stable every year. Through 2024, the fund is, actuarial report net position showed it, we're funded 114%. So we're just collecting funding as per the actuarial report. So if you guys have any questions, we can just accept and place the sun file.
I'll make the motion to accept and place sun file.
So we have a first, but we have a second, then we got discussion.
I have a question.
Right. Just going to get a second, then we have discussion.
I'll second that.
First and a second. Discussion, all in.
Just a question, as we trying to be welcoming businesses, like this large water impact fee for the Planet Fitness, how large it is and what is like, how much did we get from? Because this was existing business before, and the Planet Fitness moved in. I just want to, do you have an idea how much we, this amount?
I don't have the exact amount. I could get it for you and send you an email of the actual breakdown.
I can tell you that it is based on a calculation of usage, of assumed usage.
For their plan.
Like, are we talking like tens of thousands?
I have no, well, I don't know the expense, but I do know that this is calculated through inspection services, and they will provide the same calculation, basically. The only difference is that it's based on the usage. And then they send that out, and that's where the impact fee for water comes from.
Okay.
Yeah, so I can get you the amount of the two. I mean, it's roughly $3,000 per residential unit, but the commercial units are more. And I wanted to say that those were well within the $30,000 to $80,000 range that we collected.
Oh, that's substantial. Okay, we've got a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Going on to G7, this is, again, Madam Director of Finance, you've got the floor.
I've got the floor for the next couple. So the annual TID reports are required to be submitted to the Department of Revenue by July 1st. So I did complete those, and I did attach those in your packet. And then those are presented to the finance committee who recommended acceptance and approval of them. I will go through each of the TID districts and then talk about the plan for each. So initially, it was brought to the attention of the council, the delayed assessment process from last year, and how it impacted the overall tax increment that would have been collected for 2025. In that case, I wanted to present on here the actual reported value that was reported from the assessor at the time that the assessor came onboard. Estimated values of each TID was required to be submitted to the Department of Revenue. And if they weren't revised or amended by a specific time, then that's what the Department of Revenue certifies. And if they change, the amendment is presented, and the correction is taken care of in the following year. So for TID 5, the reported value from '24 was 69.5 million, but the actual value was 90 million. So that $21 million correction would have, would be corrected this coming year for a tax increment collection. TID 6 was reported at 26 million, but was actually 41 million. TID 7 was reported at 49 million, but was actually 42-ish million. And then to date was reported 130 million, and the actual value was 138 million. So actually, the preliminary statement of changes just came out this week, and so I was, or last week, and I was able to verify that these corrected amounts are on there. So the city will receive a bump in tax increment this year. And then as assessments are not delayed next year, then we will go back to just normal assessment for tax increment collection. So TID 5 currently has $76.5 million for tax incremental value for the district for 2024. That does not include the correction because that will be on next year's report. The district still has $24.5 million in outstanding debt. There are, I believe, two or three properties left that could be developed in TID 5, so the project plan is essentially complete, but those undevelopable properties are still able to be, become some sort of project. But there's nothing necessarily on the table at this point. The city has two MRO bonds that have not triggered yet, one for $3.5 million, one for $1.5 million. Three and a half million MRO bond does not trigger until the district meets a specific increment threshold. And the $1.5 million has strict regulations on payments, and that's not triggered until TID 6 had roughly $25 million in increment. The district has $8.6 million in outstanding debt, and the city is making those payments. The project plan is in process. There was a recent change to, I believe, that one of the commercial properties was just rezoned to residential or multifamily. So that project plan is still going for another subdivision. And then there's still quite a bit of land within the district that has not been developed, and those properties are paying a minimum assessment guarantee at this point. We do have one municipal revenue obligation, an MRO with bare development, and that totals 3.1 million. That obligation is not triggered until after the public improvements are formally accepted, which has not happened yet. TID 7, that's the only blighted district. That district is at $43.4 million in incremental value. We do have one outstanding obligation at 4.99 million. Due to the sale of Vila Village, we did pay off the mortgage re-loan, so now we only have one outstanding debt in TID 7. The city agreed to pay an MRO to the developer totaling 14.9 million, and those MRO payments were triggered in 2022. They were supposed to be starting in 2021, but due to the delay in development, they didn't trigger until 2022. TID 8 had 81, or 89.1 million in value. We have $3.5 million in outstanding debt. That is our second to newest TID, so there's a lot of project plan progress that is going on right now in that TID. The development assumptions, talked about 125 million in project costs. There's a delay in Elm Road due to a decrease in the funding and the increase in construction costs. There's also, and I know the city engineer isn't here anymore, but right now, there's some concern about projects going on with MMSD, Oak Creek, some sewer lines. So there's a lot of conversation around trying to expedite some projects in TID 8 to accommodate those other obligations. The city has one MRO that was triggered in TID 8. However, no payment has been made because the minimum assessment guarantee has not been met. And then in October of 2023, the city formed TID District Number 9, and that was to accommodate the Karma Labs project. We have $1.8 million of outstanding debt that we took out in 2024. The city agreed to provide a $1.5 million MRO to the developer, and that has not been triggered yet. And then the, right now, the development, or I'm sorry, the TID is estimated to receive about $102 million in value. Karma Labs had a minimum assessment guarantee of $14.5 million, and they actually are at 29 million. So they will not be paying the city a minimum assessment guarantee. So as you can see, the TID annual reports are in here. These are produced again on an annual basis to the Department of Revenue. The only thing I want to point out on them that is a benefit of yours is on page two of each of the annual reports, you will see the ending balance of the TID to date, or to, through 2024. And then the future cost through the life of the TID, the future revenue through the life of the TID, and these are as of updated cash flows through 2024. And then the surplus or deficit is essentially the most important number that I think about when you look at, how is the TID going to perform over time, and what is it going to look like at the life? So through 20, these numbers will change annually based on development assumptions and value assumptions, but that bottom-line surplus or deficit number is through 2024, what is the TID going to look like at the life? So you'll see that each one does have a positive number, so we just want to continue to make sure that we're collecting the increment and making future projects an important piece. So that is all I have. If you guys have any questions.
Council questions.
I'll make the motion to accept and place sun file.
One second.
First and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Motion carries. G8, resolution to authorize a financial services contract with Ellers and Associates to aid with annual tax incremental district reporting. Madam Director of Finance.
So it's no surprise that the city has a ton of development going on right now. I wanted to bring this contract forward for two reasons. One, because this is essentially work that Ellers is already doing on a non-contract. They're just invoicing us as they update cash flows and projections as we have conversations with developers. But it also allows Ellers to come out and give their financial expertise at the Joint Review Board, who reviews the TIDS on an annual basis. So for $2,500, Ellers will continue to provide updated cash flows as projects come in, as increment is generated. And then they will come to the Joint Review Board and prepare all of the documents that they need to review with the help of myself and the Economic Development Director. I do the TID annual reports and then provide them to them, and they update the rest of the cash flows. And then, again, they will just come do their presentation. And then these project costs are absorbed within each of the TIDS.
Very good. Further discussion? See none? Is there a motion?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
First and a second. Is that a roll call or not?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Motion carries. G9, in ordinance to amend ordinance 2023-2569, ordinance adopting the 2024 annual budgets for general solid waste fire department grants, St. Martin's Fair, development donations, civic celebrations, debt service, TID 5, TID 6, TID 7, TID 8, TID 9, capital outlay, equipment replacement, capital improvement, and sewer funds for the City of Franklin for fiscal year 2024 to provide appropriations for actual performance to amend budget for calendar year 2024. Madam Director of Finance.
So I don't feel that I need to go through this memo word for word. I hope that you guys read it, all the overspending that was going on in 2024. There is a lot of offsetting revenue, as you'll see, so there isn't much budgetary impact to general, to fund balances. But per state statute, we are required to stay within our budgetary guidelines, and without this amendment, we're really not following the state statute. So this will allow for the budget to actually match the performance of the year. And I can answer any questions on any of the overspending that you may have read about.
Questions from the alders.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
First and a second. Roll call, please.
Alderman Caccarelli?
Aye.
Alderwoman Eichman? Aye. Alderwoman Sun?
Aye.
Alderwoman Day?
Aye.
Alderwoman Craig?
Aye.
Six ayes, no noes. Motion carries. G10, in ordinance to repeal Chapter 167 sex offenders and recreate Chapter 167 entitled Sex Offender Residency Restrictions and Child Safety Zones of the Municipal Code of Franklin, Wisconsin. Mr. City Attorney, would you like to start? Could somebody please turn his mic on?
Well, as the council's well aware, this subject matter was before the council on June 17th, and that action sheet, as well as all the court cases and the studies, copies, are within the packet. The action sheet for this meeting essentially summarized the recommendations with regard to the changes. And council members were provided with a, essentially a work product list of what other area municipalities, how their sex offender residency restriction ordinances, terms are. And as I stated at the last meeting, I conferred with attorneys who litigated the main subject cases, most recently with regard to, here's the reason why, change your ordinance, and presented that at the last meeting also. And I know that meeting ended with Alderwoman Eichman suggesting that the police chief be at this meeting, and the police chief is here. So I have, nothing has changed with regard to the recommendations I made. And so I guess here to answer questions or discuss.
Okay. Alderwoman Eichman, you start with the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. As I have some constituents here this evening, and I know the reason why they're here, because of a situation over in their neighborhood, that particular court order is already within that amount of distance, so this would not change that person having that residency there, because it's already within that parameter, is what the city attorney explained to me earlier today. So this does not affect that particular case at all. And I've expressed in the last meeting regards to this, obviously, I'm not a fan of this as a mother and a grandmother. I mean, I don't think a lot of people would be. It was also explained to me earlier today that this residency, per se, is, once the punishment, per se, is a terminology that was used, given to me earlier today, is over, so this is, affects it after. They've done, whether time in jail, whatever it may be, this is after they have been, they have served their sentence, their punishment, counseling, whatever it may be. And this is, and Jesse, please correct me if I'm wrong, this is protecting the children to the best extent available under the law of what we've been provided as, this is, comes from the state level. Correct?
Yes.
It's disappointing overall, without a doubt. I don't know if the chief had anything he wanted to say or add to it, or if there's anything at all that he may be able to.
Thank you, Chief, for appearing tonight.
Yes, thank you very much for appearing. I appreciate it.
So Alderwoman Eichman, you still have the floor. And Alderwoman Day.
Well, not that I want to put you on the spot, but would you mind sharing your thoughts on this?
Well, I think that there's, through statutory changes, through case law, I think there's very, this ordinance has to change. Our current ordinance is really not enforceable as written. I understand the concerns. I think sometimes... I think sometimes people focus too much on the known offenders. I think there's an education piece out there for personal safety, because there's a lot of people that maybe have not yet been identified that could be living next door to you. Not trying to scare people, but that's a realistic approach. All these offenders that live in the city will be on our city website, as they are currently. Should any more move in, they will also be there as well, so you'll know where people Again, over the years, my experience is people are very concerned, again, about those known That's an important piece of the puzzle, but again, it's the, as far as for children and stuff, the education, schools they receive, what's acceptable, what's not, because oftentimes offenders might live in their own home. So I don't have any concerns with the change to this ordinance. In fact, it actually makes it more enforceable. Like the original domicile provision, it's not constitutional. There's nothing we can do about that. We maybe don't like it, but it's been decided in courts, and it's out of our control. Changing to the 1,000-foot rule, of course, if someone lives at 1,500 feet from a place, they might not like that change, but it involves, I'm sure you read, the percentage of available residences. So if you only have 2% of your, I think maybe it's like 3% under that 2,000-foot rule that was actually available to live in, that's also not constitutional. So we can make this ordinance work far better than the one we have right now. It's far more enforceable. So actually, I think it's, some people might be upset. I look at it as a positive change, given the circumstances that were dictated, that are outside our control.
Thank you. I greatly appreciate that, Chief.
Sure.
Alderwoman Day.
Thank you. So I read through all of these a second time, and I will be a much cooler, composed self this time. What, and I think where I was getting hung up last time was, I wasn't necessarily understanding exactly what needed to change and why it needed to change, and in reading through the case laws again, and the order that they were in here, I'm understanding that what we have now could be considered punitive, and that's where we run into trouble. So we can have, and for people who want to follow along, it's stated a bunch of times, but on page 271 in our packet, that's the Southern, South Milwaukee case, under paragraph 24, it talks about if the ordinance is non-punitive and considered civil regulatory measure to protect the community, then it's okay. So I can see where, given the percentages, we were kind of an outlier still. I don't love that we have to make the changes, but I can understand why they are coming, why they're being presented to us. I do have a few things to consider that I, questions that I would like either Chief or the city attorney to weigh in on. The city attorney had presented us with an email of 11 municipalities around us. I believe that was a request from our last meeting of what do other communities around us have? And in looking at those, I took the City of Milwaukee out of that, what I'm going to say next, just because they didn't have a specific distance mentioned in the email we received from the city attorney. But of the other 10, I just did simple math, added them up, divided by 10, and the average was 1,240. So I am curious if we went from 2,000 down to 1,250, if that is something that is amicable, that matches a couple of municipalities that border us, makes us a little bit more congruent with our neighbors, and it's not as restrictive as we were before. So that was my first question. My second question that I have is regarding the Citizen Appeal Board. I think this is the part that I have the strongest objection to for a couple of reasons. The first is, as a community, we're having a lot of trouble staffing the committees that we currently have. I said this last month, I'll say it again, I'm not sure who would want to be on this board for a number of reasons. One, your address is public knowledge, so if, whether you're for or against something, guess what? Everybody knows where you live, so that's not great. But also, if it's written into code and we don't have people to fill the positions, we don't have the body for the appeal, if there was to be an appeal, which my understanding means that it defaults to council. So if we have to have one, I don't think we do, because I think there's mechanisms in place for people to appeal without having that extra step, but if we have to have one, I think that it is more prudent for that appeal to come before the common council. In a closed session or open session, I don't care, but I think it's more prudent that it falls on this body, which is supported in, on page 243 in the John Doe versus Iowa case, where they talked about the legislature is institutionally equipped to weigh the benefits and burdens of these various decisions. So I think there's case law that supports it staying here if we need to have that body, but I just really don't think we do. If I could get, like, your opinions from your perspectives of that, because my understanding of how this works is, somebody wants to move in, if first, we first look at the municipal code, can they? Yes or no? And if it's no, they can appeal to a police chief or their designee, and they have a decision. And if they still say no, then they can appeal to the court system. So there's already a very long mechanism in place. I don't know that we need to add another review board when there's already three steps to go through. But like I said, if that is something that the city attorney feels we have to have, then I would say it should stay with council. My last question, you already answered, the known offenders are on our website and are updated pretty much when somebody, if somebody new comes into the community, it gets updated.
Correct. It's updated every time we're made aware, because it's usually a, yes, Department of Corrections lets us know, and then we do like a bi-week, or twice a month, our Community Resource Officer checks the website, make sure everything's up to date, and then he sends me an email letting me know if there's any new offenders in the city, or also, excuse me, living in the city, or even working in the city. So I know of all those changes every two weeks.
Okay, great. So I guess those are my two questions. Can we go 1,250 instead of 1,000? Because that's sort of the average of all the communities around us, and do we actually need the appeal board?
Mr. City Attorney?
In the real world, I was thinking the last couple of days, oh, somebody's going to ask for a 1,250, and we don't have a map, and plus, my concern was, 1,000 is still under half, so 1,250 would be less, and kind of is what it is realm. With regard to the other municipalities, I did have a note on there that a few of them were in the process of updating. Those were all the higher ones, so that calculation does not work. And what was the other? Oh, with regard to the appeal process, number of, numbers of other municipalities have that. The courts have found that to be the providing due process, because what is in the draft ordinance actually provides opportunity for hearing if there's a choice thereof by the decision results, you know, on the offender. So they're given due process. All that's in the current code now with regard to the chief is if there's a violation, the chief studies it, reviews it, and then prepares a written determination that upon all the facts and circumstances and purpose of the chapter, that the activity substantially interferes with enjoyment of life, health, or safety of others, and refers it to the city attorney to bring an action in the name of the city in court. So that's about a local appeals process. And so the recommendation is, and I understand with boards and commissions and et cetera, but I have not heard from any other municipalities with the appeal board having an issue with trying to find board members, and it's proposed as five members, and that is done elsewhere. It is your separate, independent decision maker is the position regarded to versus it coming to the common council, which is also a legislative body and provides this legislation, et cetera. And potential, reduce the potential membership from five to three is maybe an alternative on that, but perhaps see if five applicants are there if it's approved.
If I could chime in on that for a second to agree with Alderwoman Day. You know, this creation of this appeal board, if we could, as a council, decide that it remains with the council, I understand what you're saying, if that's an option to remain with the council, where the council makes that decision, period, opposed to us looking to create not only, you know, my views on more boards and commissions, which I'm against, to then look at, can we keep it to the council? I mean, this is the thing, too, is how many of these will come forward? As an alderman for six years, I never heard a peep. Okay? Mayor for two, still haven't heard a peep. So I don't know how many of these will come forward, but I think it's prudent that if at this point, if it's part of a motion that we keep this at the council level, and if in the event, you know, it becomes so overburdened some that we need to go out and create another board or commission, at that point, that would be done with. Counsel, would that be acceptable?
I wouldn't recommend that. You have a zoning and building board of review, or board of appeals, and board of review property, et cetera, separate, independent decision makers.
Well, I know what you're saying, kind of, but I would just like to see at this point, it remain, if we could have it remain with council, to Alderwoman Day's point, that's where I think that's, I mean, have it remain with council at this point. Alderwoman Day? And Alderman Peccarelli?
For clarification, then, Mr. City Attorney, are you suggesting that this appeal board, if it was a citizen-appointed board, that they would be the final decision-making body? Because most of our committees and commissions and boards are all advisory, and it comes to council anyway. So would the suggestion be that, because to me, then, you're, if they're just advisory, then it comes here anyway. If they're the final decision-making body, I go back to my, eh, who wants to be on that for a variety of reasons? I would be curious why anybody would want to do it, that their impartiality, but I don't know. Slippery slope. I don't know. I, yeah. I yield.
Well, to your point, so counsel, is that a simple advisory, where we come back to council anyway?
No.
Or is it, so it's the final say?
Yeah.
Hmm. Madam Director of Administration, while we're waiting?
I just wanted to say, you said exactly what I was thinking, which is that most of these boards are advisory to council and end up, obviously, putting, laying everything at council's feet. So I, unless there's a legal reason why we need to have an appeals board that's separate from the council, I don't know that this is something that, I mean, I guess, what's the requirements for somebody to serve on that board? I mean, what gives somebody else the authority to make a decision over anybody else's, you know, where they're living? Obviously, judges have authority and council has authority. How, what's the authority from a citizen standpoint, for a citizen, to make some sort of judgment on the appeal board?
Could we go back to the first question that was asked of the council, which was, is this appeals board the final, or does it come back to the common council after that?
And he said it was final.
Resolution's final, and if that board denies the exemption, it's under law, so it's not, the council says no, or the appeal board says no, and that's the final.
So, and that's to my point, then, let's try to keep here at council.
And with regard to the administrator's question, what other board, commission, and committee memberships require some level of quality?
Almost all of them. All of them, pretty much, board of review, personnel committee, has HR backgrounds, finances, finance backgrounds, tech is, you know.
No.
It's not a requirement.
It's not a requirement.
It's listed as such on our website.
But not a, it's not a requirement. So are we, what do you think? I mean, I, we're going to still, we have plenty of people that want to talk on this, but I think the thing is, is if we cannot have it, not have an appeal board and have it come to council, I mean, we haven't had anything in my eight-plus years up here, so I mean, are we looking for a problem that doesn't exist? Are we trying to create something that we don't need to create? That's my point. Everything else is...
I could research that in depth, but potentially, putting the decision-making on this particular subject, some will argue that elected decision makers should not be making the decision on this, because they might be too prone to follow requests from voters, voting persons on the issue. That's just a potential argument out there.
You mean, following what our constituents want? Exactly. Alderwoman Day?
Versus the law, if that's the case.
Well, Alderwoman Day?
And versus the standards in the draft ordinance.
You still have the floor.
Just, one last statement that I'll yield to everyone else, just doubles the advocate to that point, is that that could be any topic that we discuss up here.
Yep.
That we can be unduly influenced by people to make a decision one way or the other, so.
But this is in the constitutional due process realm, subject matter.
Mr. Peccarelli, then Alderwoman Eichman, then Alderman Suss.
So I guess my question, I mean, I am supportive of this being, going to council, and primarily because, to your point, it's been eight years, for example, and we haven't had any, my concern on that is, you appoint people on this, they're literally on something that is not meeting nothing for years and years and years, and all of a sudden, it's just going to show up and then have to be ready to go through whatever that is. So to me, there's got to be a lot more than you're just on a board, because the problem's going to be, when we do have something come up, if it's been dormant for us a long time, like, how is that going to work? So, because most of the other ones you talk about, they meet regularly. They might skip a month here and there, but they meet regularly, and there's process and everything associated with that. You're talking about something that is going to sit for, most likely, for a while, so how does that, how does that work with this? Because there's, you're going to end up, people are going to rotate off of it, you're going to have new people on it, and they've never, they might have never met, so that's where my concern is, and having a separate, a separate, like...
It's mentioned in the court decisions about other governments having board of appeal, and how that serves the due process, which is required for this.
So, okay, Mr. Peccarelli yielded for a second, but to go back, so could we tonight pass this without putting an appeal board in place and substituting it with the common council? Could we do that?
I would refer to research that particular subject.
Alderwoman Eichman?
As far as the comment, in regards to what the elected would be persuaded to do by our constituents that we're here to serve for... As far as the comment in regards to what the elected would be persuaded to do by our constituents that we're here to serve for, how is that any different than a resident that would be sitting on this appeal board, doing what their peers, their neighbors, their friends, possibly family are persuading them to do? I guess I don't see the difference there. I mean, it's it's the same thing, just different, somebody who's elected versus not elected. They're going to be persuaded by their neighbors and other people as well. I mean, I just, I don't see that main difference there.
I think she's direct.
They're not going to upset their neighbors next door.
Boards and commission members that participate in hearings process are always instructed and aware that their decision making process is confined to the record made for them on that specific matter.
Still have the floor.
And again, the qualifications, how would we have people serving on this appeal board? You know if they're qualified or not? Because there are not people on our boards and commissions that are qualified to be on some of the boards and commissions. I was put on technology as a fine example. I can tell you how to work Facebook, but as far as a lot of other things in regards to technology, I'm not a pro of that. But yet I was placed on technology by the former administration. There are people that sit on personnel committee that do not have HR degrees. I'm one of them, I don't have a degree in HR. And this goes on and on, it could go down every single board and commission. There's people that don't have the particular qualifications, there are residents that have a passion and want to do good for the city and serve and learn and that we're honored that they want to give and volunteer their time. And we're very appreciative of them, but there's not people that are experts in those fields by any means. I'll yield.
Mr. Salus?
Oh, Mr. City Attorney first.
Any person applying for a position on the board, part of the process could be, will be interviewed by the police department and the legal services department along with the mayor prior to appointment or decision of appointment.
For for a volunteer position?
Yes.
I guess we're going back to you.
I apologize, I just, I, that just seems like an awful lot to ask of a resident who's going to be volunteering their time to go through this in their process. Like board of review, their decisions never come back to hearing. We have a board of review compared to the safety and well being of the children within our city. I don't. I'll yield for now.
Madam Director Administration and Alderman Salus.
I just wanted to ask the city attorney if it's possible to approve the ordinance and delay to or hold over to the next council session, what that board would look like? You know, if it could be the common counsel or if it's a required board? Because I don't think you're comfortable in answering and going with a definite yes, and I don't think they're comfortable in moving forward with an appeals board.
I already thought of that and, you know, it's another couple of weeks I would put this matter over again for that singular subject matter. Instead of approving parts of it that, and there's interplay somewhere in there.
Before we go to Alderman Salus, would that be where we could also adjust that 1250?
To get a map with regard to what percentage of housing would be available from the IT department, assuming they're able to do that in time and bring that that back to.
Alderman Salus?
Just a couple of points regarding the distance throughout these long pages. It says, no scientific study that excluding sex offenders from residing within certain distance of a school or childcare facility is likely to enhance the safety of the children. So basically, what this, what they are, what they are saying that like distance somewhat become irrelevant in term of the occurrences of these abuses. So, you know, whether it's a 1,000 in some cases, there is no this, no difference in the statistics, whether it's 500 or 3,000. So so just like basically, I, I, you know, I would say if we stay with the 1,000, that might be okay. The second item I like to address, to ask the city attorney, is there a possibility we we merge this committee that we supposed to form for for this purpose with other committees, like existing committees? Because to the mayor's point, that we have difficulty filling all these committees. And we have certain committees, like, for example, the licensing committee, they deal with many issues and stuff like that. Can we add this task to another existing committee and just that we we merge two committees, the environmental and parks, whatever? Can we make such a committee and merge it with an existing committee and call it a day? Is that a possibility?
I already thought, that's the one I thought of, but.
Like the police and fire commission?
Yeah.
It's an interesting idea.
Can look at that, too.
Well, I definitely like to see the distance to Alder Woman Day's point to make it to 1250, to put something hard on that, regardless of what mapping might be, as long as the distance could be extended so that if the residents are stuck having one of these people there, how they can deal with that, number one. Have a nice night, Mr. Marcus Christie. So then going to Alderman Salus's point, that perhaps that is not an issue. But I guess let's just put it in writing so we know we've got that to the chief's point that it is somehow now is enforceable. So, you know, I guess, you know, I guess it's no secret, I think, where we stand, but I I just, I think we're trying to overcomplicate this. If we have to table it for a meeting, fine, but to have it come back here as the appeal board, I think, makes the most sense with that adjustment to 1250. Mr. Salus, oh, city attorney, city attorney, you've got the floor.
So the points that are under concern, review whether or not in lieu of a board of appeal, common counsel could do it, research that. Also, review whether or not the police and fire commission could perform those services and also obtain the map and the number of properties available, not available with regard to 1,250 feet. And is that it? Bring it back to the next, next meeting.
Sure, I'll make a motion to table it until the next meeting.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Mr. Craig, you've got the floor.
My question actually is about the distance, but is our topography and our makeup of our city part of the hindrance as far as what establishes the distance? Because if you go down the list of all the items that would incur that that buffer zone, I mean, that's a lot of different things that we have plenty of in the city regarding public parks, parkways, park facilities, recreational trails, daycares. There's a lot of businesses and a lot of these items of the, what, 11 or 15 items that because of what we have already established here, it kind of squeezes that square footage that's available for for this. And if it means that, oh, well, we have to provide, you know, 50% or more area within the city depth, it kind of begs the question of, do we have to close parks then? Do we have to forfeit daycare centers? Otherwise, we will continually have to like lower that threshold to meet that 50% or more or even approaching 50% as far as available housing. I mean, is that, is that what we're having to look at or?
Mr. City Attorney.
I mentioned 50%, just because the 46% was a little below it. There's no 50% standard out there or requirement for a 50%.
So what?
And existing facilities are what they are.
So what, 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 what would be the the threshold that would be viewed as as a punitive or a banishment as what was, what was referenced in many of these cases of these ordinances effectively build a banishment clause? But if we have so many parks, trails, aquatic facilities or specialized schools for children, including, but not limited to a gymnastics academy, dance academy or music school? If we have all these things as amenities within our city, that creates buffer zones that say you cannot live here? And what's the threshold that says this is, this is too low of a percentage of availability? I think that, I think if that becomes more of a, of being able to kind of flesh out what that looks like, I think that would be able to, be able to push the the distance into a proper level that I think others on this council would be much more comfortable with, in my opinion.
With regard to the particular facilities uses, I don't see how that makes a difference. It is what it is. And it comes down to how much affordable housing is left available within the city and what percentage of that, of the entire available housing is it? That's it.
I just had interesting question.
You still got the floor, Mr. Craig?
I'm good, I'm thinking.
Just. Alderman Salus, you now have the floor.
Based on this discussion, suppose you met whatever standard you met and Mr. Salus decided to build a daycare facility in a place. What does that mean that either you want to deny my request to build the daycare facility or you want to tell the the sex offenders who live around there to move?
If they're there first.
Right.
So so I could be anything up with that if they, if they were residing there already and I decided to build a daycare facility next door, so.
That would be your choice.
Then I have. But what happens to the sex offender? Do they have to move or can they stay there?
That would be a fact.
I wanted him to say that. Okay, thank you. Everybody breathe. Mr. Pecorelli, then back to Alder Woman Eichmann.
Yeah, just want to clarify then. So that happens, no one, no one has to move or anything. But the percentage, by understanding of what's going on here, is the percentage that would go down assuming there wasn't anything that that those homes are all of, that all those places, residents were available. If you did that and it was 1,250 feet or 1,000 feet, then all of a sudden, the way I'm understanding this, all of that now would be covered. So over time, as those would get built out, doesn't that start to mean that the percentage drops or am I missing something?
City Attorney.
Are you counting other housing that's being developed along with and in conjunction with this one facility?
Well, it's, but it's also assuming that, the way I would look at it is, as we develop other areas, parks and other things go in, trails go in, all those types of things. So so you're not always picking up 100% of all those, right? So that's what I'm just trying to get an idea of, is this something, once we establish it, we're going to have to keep coming back to regularly? Because the percentage, we got to be careful and and kind of rechecking this to make sure we're still in, I'll call it compliance. I don't know how, you know, like, from what we were trying to set originally.
Seriously, you have the floor.
Would take many years for it to make a difference.
Alder Woman Eichmann, back to you.
I really didn't have anything else to add other than earlier when I made the motion to table this till the next meeting.
Okay, we have a first and a second to table, Mr. City Attorney.
One more time, the primary concerns from the council to be reviewed brought back to the next meeting is whether instead of the appeal board being created, that that decision making process be done by the police and fire commission or the common counsel that'll be reviewed? And what the percentages and numbers are with regard to a 1,250 foot distance requirement?
Yes.
It's just those two things.
Yes. I thought there was a third.
That's one.
I thought there was two. I mean, two items, not a third. You wanted a map, too. That's what it was.
Right.
A map to show that.
Yeah, we'll, I mentioned the 1,200.
Okay. Okay. Alder Woman Eichmann.
Was there a request by another alder up here to asking if the surrounding municipalities also have the sex offender residency appeal board? Or did you include that in?
It's what in the list and it wasn't every single municipality around.
Okay.
But.
That was.
Greenfield.
Are these yeses or nos?
As one. Greendale. New Berlin. Germantown. McQuan. Brookfield. On a quick check.
What page is that on, Jesse?
That's what you were sent.
Okay.
Still have the floor.
I am.
All right, we have a first and a second, all was in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? I have a motion carries, comes back to next meeting. Thank you, Chief. G11, establish a trick or treat date for Saturday, October 25th, 2025. And this would be, the start of this would be from 4:00 to 7:00 PM. And Alder Woman Eichmann, then Alder Woman Day, you lead the charge.
Thank you, I was going to make the motion, I was going to throw the motion out there right away to establish it for Saturday, October 25th. With how the calendar year falls this year, having it obviously the weekend prior is going to be much too early. Having it the weekend later, now we're into November, more of a chance of snow and so forth. And I wanted to also point out a very small percentage, when I say small, less than five people reached out to me asking, why can't we just have it on Halloween? One resident said, like every other surrounding municipality, not every surrounding municipality has it on Halloween. The only one I'm aware of that has it on Halloween is Meskigo in Lockershaw County, where is Milwaukee. And I wanted to point out, four years ago up here, when I was a newer alder, that was presented to the council. The only ones that were up here were the mayor, when he was an alderman, and myself. At first, I believe it passed 6-0, everyone thought, how fun, let's try something new, something different on Halloween. And shortly after that vote, a constituent reached out to me saying, I'm a little concerned about that. Do you realize that there are still school buses going out around that time, 4:00, 5:00 o'clock start time on a weeknight? There's after school activities where there's going to be school buses out, school bus traffic, kids running through the streets, trick or treating. It'd be hard also for drivers to see kids crossing the road in the dark. I mean, that seems to be a general consensus throughout the city, from social media to calls that we all take as everyone speeds through the city. Now we've got kids out past dark, trick or treating, crossing streets in the dark. It's a school night, not all, but most residents are still going to be at. It's a school night, not all, but most residents are still gonna be at work at that time. You want people to be home to bill their answer to their door for trick-or-treaters. It's nice for children to come home from school, have some supper, you know, then maybe go out trick-or-treating. I mean, there's just numerous reasons why we found that it was not in the best interest to have it on a school night and a work night. And lack of participation, a lot of residents probably wouldn't participate when they have to get up early for work the next morning. Since we have changed it to a Saturday, and also I wanted to point out, another one of my constituents, each who happened to be here this evening, there is some pushback from former administration of, we did not need to switch it. She took the initiative and went out and got a petition signed of hundreds and hundreds of residents to not have it on a school night. So residents really spoke up, and even after she closed out that petition, there were still people coming out and saying that would have been a horrible idea. So, since we switched it to a Saturday, I have had so many residents reach out and say, wow, we never really knew our neighbors, we got together. I mean, huge black parties, I mean, I drove around a little bit on the nights of trick-or-treat over by where my parents live, my area, I was invited to a few different areas where neighborhoods just all get together and they make it a fun event for the children and for the trick-or-treaters. So it brings uniformity and community along with trick-or-treating. I had teachers, which I wasn't expecting, but I guess I should have, I had teachers reach out to me from Franklin thanking me for not having it on a school night and having it on a Saturday versus a Sunday, saying that the kids were so much better, well-behaved that Monday morning, and they were focusing and looked like they had some good sleep the night before and so forth. I mean, there's just so many positives that far outweigh not having it on actual Halloween. Now, next year, we can take a different look at it because I don't have my calendar right in front of me, but I believe someone said that Halloween falls on Saturday next year for 2027. So, but I would like to go ahead and make the motion that we hold trick-or-treat on October 25th, 2025, from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. That way, we have some daylight, getting into a little bit of darkness for the Halloween trick-or-treat observance in the city of Franklin.
I'll second.
So we have a first and a second, further discussion by Alder Woman Day.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm the outlier, I'm fine with that. I'm a Halloween person, it's my favorite day of the year, Halloween is Halloween. I, I understand the arguments in, in favor of, of having it on a weekend outside, outside of the darkness piece, cuz 4:00 to 7:00 at the end of October, that entire time is dark, no matter, no matter what. So the darkness argument, it's the same on Friday as it is on Saturday, I think, could be wrong, but I think it's the same. But what I will say is, there's a kerfluffle with this every year since I started paying attention.
Hold on, you lost half the commission, including me.
A kerfluffle. If, if we're not going to do Halloween, I strongly encourage us, for planning purposes, and I will say this, the major, not everybody, gentlemen down here, two chairs to my left, is, is in a different school district, but the majority of us have kiddos in the Franklin school system, and traditionally speaking, the last weekend of October is a long weekend. They get either a Thursday, Friday, or Friday off. So for planning purposes for families, I, I think we should make this static. If it's the last Saturday of October, sometimes it'll be Halloween, six times, six times in a row it won't be, but at least for planning purposes, families know, it's the last Saturday of October from 4:00 to 7:00, we don't have to vote on it every year. I'm not entirely certain why we vote on it every year, it could just be a day, and then that's just when it is.
City clerk will explain that we have to.
Right, it has to be voted on.
Hold on, she'll, city clerk will have the floor.
I don't know.
And only the city clerk.
Okay, but.
I don't, it always come up, we have people that, like, months ago that want to know when.
But if you make it static, then it's just always that day, right?
Mr. City Attorney.
Not on the agenda. Bring it back to make it permanent.
Yeah.
I think we have on there, or as directed.
Read the title.
Yes, but the or as directed of the motion is or as directed.
It reads of one day for 2025.
Let's do it for 2025, and then we're gonna all move forward so we can, we'll bring it back, and I understand what you're saying, but it was to my understanding from the madam clerk, that we had to bring this back annually, and if it's not true, we'll make sure it's fixed, and we'll bring it back to put that into play. I think it makes sense, you still have the floor?
Okay.
I, I know, it's, it's, there's all sorts of crazy things we've uncovered since we've become elected that have been just dumb.
I have all, I've always been confused why you have to vote on when Halloween is, but okay.
I, I agree with you, nobody's disagreeing with you. So we'll, we'll fix it long-term, but not tonight, but we're just gonna establish the date for tonight as, as mentioned. So we had a first, do we have a second on that?
Yeah.
Mr. Pecorelli, do you second or are you looking for comment?
No, I second it.
Okay, first and a second, all is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it, motion carries. We are going to. Go up to letter H, as in Henry, who's got that tonight?
I've got it.
Excellent. Alder Woman Day, you've got the floor.
All right, license committee met this evening, so we'll start with the extraordinary entertainment and special event application from on the border for their event on August 16th, was approved pending they turn in their certificate of insurance to the clerk's office, which they are aware of, and they say they will have it to you by tomorrow, hopefully.
Yeah.
So that was, yep, so approved pending they send that, submit that to the clerk's office. Same with their temporary extension of licensed alcohol on the premise for the same event. Then we had one, two, three, four, or five operators, and they were all approved.
Is there a second on this?
I'll second.
First and a second, roll call, please.
Alderman Craig?
Aye.
Alderman Salus?
Aye.
Alder Woman Day?
Aye.
Alderman Sam?
Aye.
Alder Woman Ikman?
Aye.
Six ayes and noes, motion carries, going into ayes and ida, vouchers and payroll approval. There are three points, number one, this will be a roll call vote as well, city vouchers within any date of July 31st, 2025, in the amount of $3,243,754.29. Point two, payroll dated July 25th, 2025, in the amount of $492,608.37, and payments of the various payroll deductions in the amount of $549,206.90 plus city matching payments. And, final point, estimated payroll dated August 8th, 2025, in the amount of $471,000 and payments of the various payroll deductions in the amount of $259,000 plus city matching payments. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
First and a second, roll call, please.
Alderman Pecorelli?
Aye.
Alder Woman Ikman?
Aye.
Alderman Sam?
Aye.
Alder Woman Day?
Aye.
Alderman Salus?
Aye.
Six ayes and noes, motion carries, how about a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Second.
First and a second, all is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned at 8:28 p.m.